Praise the Lord, everybody. Okay, you know, we entered His gates with thanksgiving and praise, right? We come here with an expectation. And I don't know about you, but when I'm expecting, I'm standing and I'm waiting. And I'm waiting on God. So would everybody just rise to their feet as we stand with expectation? Amen? We would like to welcome each and every one of you here with us tonight. All who are viewing live from Facebook or whatever platform, we welcome you. We welcome you. I would welcome you in several languages, but I'mma just choose one and say welcome again. Amen? Amen. Father God, we just thank you. We thank you for such a beautiful night and a beautiful atmosphere, Lord. We thank you for the honor and the privilege to gather in your name for your glory, oh God. Lord, we ask that you guide and protect those who are on their way here, oh God. We ask that you just bless this service, Lord, in your precious name. Amen? Amen? Amen?
Hallelujah. Come on, is he worthy to be praised tonight? Come on, is he an awesome God tonight? Come on, just lift your hands in his presence. Begin to open up your mouth and just worship your God in your way. However you encounter him, just open up your mouth and do that. Come on, Lord, we glorify you. We thank you, Jesus, for your goodness and for your grace and for your mercy. Come on, talk to him. We came to encounter you tonight. Come on, we came to fellowship with the body tonight and to fellowship with you, oh God. Come on, you alone are worthy. Come on, from the rising of the sun until the setting of the same, your name is still worthy. Your name is still worthy to be exalted. Come on, whatever you're going through tonight, just cast your cares upon him. Just look to him tonight, amen? He's the lifter up your head. Come on, your burden bearer. Come on, he will be with you. He promises to never leave you nor forsake you. Amen? Come on, just lift your hands and surrender one more time. And just surrender all your cares to him right here. All your fears, all your thoughts, anxieties. Lord, we thank you. We glorify you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Jesus. Come on, created me a clean heart, oh God. I renew the right spirit within me that I can worship you in spirit and in truth. Is that your prayer tonight? That he inhabits our praises, amen? That he smiles on our worship? Lord, we glorify you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Holy are you, Lord. Oh creation, call you God. Worthy, worthy is your name. We come to worship your majesty. Come on, we bow at your feet tonight, God. The God of wonders, the God of miracles. Holy are you, Lord. Oh creation, call you God. Worthy is your name. We worship your majesty. Come on, lift your hands and say holy to the Lord tonight. Holy are you, Lord. Are you, Lord? Oh creation, oh creation, call you God. Worthy is your name. We worship your majesty. Awesome God, how great thou art. You are God. Mighty are your miracles. We stand in awe of your holy name. Lord, we bow and worship. Come on, just sing holy. Holy are you, Lord?
Are you, Lord?
Oh creation.
Oh creation.
Come on, lift your hands and say that tonight. Call you God.
Call you God.
Sing worthy, worthy.
Worthy is your name.
Come on, we worship your majesty.
We worship.
Your majesty.
Your majesty.
Sing holy, holy.
Holy are you, Lord. Are you, Lord?
That's why we bow down.
Creation.
We call you God.
Call you God.
Sing worthy, worthy. Worthy is your name.
Is your name.
We worship.
We worship.
Your majesty.
Your majesty.
Awesome God, awesome God, how great thou art.
How great thou art.
Come on, you are God. You are God. Mighty are.
Mighty are your miracles.
We stand in awe of your holy name. Lord, we bow.
Lord, we bow and worship you.
Come on, holy. Sing holy, Lord. Holy are you, Lord?
Are you, Lord?
Oh creation.
Oh creation.
We call you God.
Call you God.
Come on, lift your hands and sing worthy to the king tonight. Worthy is your name.
Is your name.
And we worship, we worship. Your majesty.
Your majesty.
Holy, holy, holy are you, Lord?
Are you, Lord?
Oh creation. Oh you, God.
Call you God.
Sing worthy, worthy is your name.
Is your name.
We worship you, Lord.
We worship.
Your majesty.
Your majesty.
Awesome God.
Awesome God.
How great.
How great thou art.
You are God.
You are God.
Mighty.
Mighty are your miracles.
We stand in awe of your holy name.
Holy name.
Lord, we bow down.
Lord, we bow.
Come on, somebody do it tonight. Come on, shout, "How awesome my God is." Magnificent, magnificent, Jesus. Awesome God.
Awesome God. How great thou art.
You are God.
You are God.
Mighty, mighty, mighty are your miracles. We stand in awe of your holy name.
Holy name.
Lord, we bow.
We bow and worship.
Come on, just worship, guys. Come on, lift your hands right here. Open up your mouth and worship your awesome God tonight. Come on, somebody, release his name tonight.
Hallelujah!
Come on, open up your mouth and do that. Come on, worship him in your way tonight. Come on, if you've been awesome, to open up your mouth and declare the greatness of our Father. Come on, Lord, you're great, you're mighty, you're awesome, omnipotent Jesus, loving Savior. We love you, Jesus. We bow at your throne, God. We stand in awe of your greatness, your majesty. Nobody like you, Lord. Hallelujah! One more time, awesome God. Awesome God!
Awesome God, how great thou art.
You are God.
You are God.
And mighty are your miracles.
We stand in awe of your holy name. Lord, we bow and worship you.
We love you. And you're awesome. You are God. Mighty are your miracles. We stand in awe of your holy. Lord, we bow and worship you. We bow down. Come on, we worship your presence here tonight, oh God. Come on, we wait on your presence here this evening. Come on, is that your heart tonight? Come on, just lift your hands in his presence. We worship you. For thou, oh Lord, art high above the earth. Thou art exalted far above all earth. Come on, lift your hands and tell the Father that tonight. For thou, oh Lord, art high above the earth. Thou art exalted far above all earth. Come on, sing, "I exalt thee." And I exalt thee. I exalt thee. I exalt thee. We exalt you, Lord. And we declare your greatness. That you're mighty, that you're powerful, that you're omnipotent, that you're great and greatly to be praised. That you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. We exalt, we exalt thee, eh? We exalt thee, Lord.
Exalt thee.
Oh.
We exalt thee.
Oh, we shout your greatness. You are so deserving of our worship, Lord. We glorify you, Lord. Come on, in your own way, open up your mouth right here and exalt the King tonight. We exalt you, Father. We exalt you, Father. We exalt you, Father. Come on, just the music. Come on, lift your voices and just open up your mouth and exalt him right here. Come on, do it. We crown you King of kings tonight. We place you at the highest place. We exalt you. We look to the hills from whence come with our help. We know that our help comes from the Lord. Come on. We exalt you, Jesus. We exalt you, Jesus. Hallelujah!
Exalt thee.
We exalt thee. Come on, who shall ascend unto the hill of the Lord? He that has cleansed hands and a pure heart. We exalt you. We exalt you. We exalt you. We exalt you. Nobody like you. Nobody like you. Nobody like you. Nobody like you. You make waves out of nowhere. Springs in the desert. We exalt you. How great thou art. You are God. Mighty are your miracles. We stand in awe. Come on, lift your hands in his presence tonight. Of your holy. Lord, we bow and worship you. How great thou art. You are God. Mighty are your miracles. We stand in awe. We stand in awe. Come on, we gaze upon your face tonight. We stand in awe. Come on, you're majestic, you're holy, you're high lifted up. We stand in awe of your holy name. Lord, we bow and worship you. Lord, we bow. Come on, somebody bow tonight. And what bow we look like is we cast our cares upon him. Come on, there's nobody like you, Jesus. That's why we bow in your presence. We dare not place anybody above you. We dare not place our concerns and our fears. We dare not place finances above you. Come on. We dare not place our fears above you. And tonight, we cast our cares upon you. Lord, we bow. One more time. Somebody's gotta bow tonight before you go. Come on. The miracle is in your bowing tonight. The miracle is in your surrender tonight. Come on, begin to let your praise arise in this room. Let your worship ascend. Come on up in this place. Give God some praise. Hallelujah! Shout unto God with a voice of triumph. Thank you! Hallelujah! 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 Come on, I believe something is opening up in this place tonight. Hey! That womb is opening up. That womb is opening up. We decree it in this house. That womb is opening up. Yes! We give you praise in this place tonight, God. Worthy, 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 worthy are you, Lord? Worthy are you, Lord? Hallelujah! Can you lift up a hallelujah in the house? Hallelujah! Yeah! Woo! Come on, lift up a shout. In his presence, this fullness of joy. In his presence is fullness of joy. And that is right-handed pleasures evermore. I tell you, it is a blessing to be in an atmosphere that has been set by the Holy Spirit. I feel like some of my Pentecostals starting to rise up in me a little bit tonight. Amen. Glory. My God. Lord, have mercy. Apostle, if you can't preach in this tonight, then... Praise God! Just turn to the person next to you and give them a high five. Come on, somebody. Praise God. You may be seated tonight. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Praise the Lord. In just a few moments, we're gonna have Apostle Andrew Kennedy come. He's gonna impart, he's gonna preach, he's gonna teach, he's gonna do whatever the Holy Ghost leads him to do. But I want you to understand the significance of what's happening here over these last two days. And that is that ambassadors have been sent into this embassy. Amen? To bring a governmental legislative word that has the ability to alter, shift, and change the region. And that's what it means to be kingdom-minded, amen? This is not a religious ceremonial thing. We believe that when we come together, the business of the kingdom is being discussed so that we can make a difference. How many know that you're not a thermometer, you're a thermostat? You change climates, amen? And so, we just are grateful for the presence of the Lord and for the glory of the Lord, amen? I'm gonna invite you. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and give. Everything that comes in tonight is gonna go to the men of God that have been with us. And as we do this, we wanna give you the opportunity to share. But we're gonna get this out of the way so that when Apostle Andrew comes, he can just come and take his liberty, amen? There was a prophetic word that was released over the house last night. And if I've learned anything spending time with these two gentlemen is that the wine is in the cluster. And the wine being in the cluster, it simply means that it is a cluster of grapes, not one individual grape, as we heard last night, that produces what it is we're asking God for. So God's gonna speak to the cluster. Sometimes we want those grape prophecies. But we had a discussion last night at dinner and it seems as though there's a shifting in the prophetic. And this prophetic generation that's coming forth now is beginning to prophesy to the cluster, not just to the grape. Hallelujah. And that's great news, amen? And so, we just... Because see, I'm not separate from you and you're not separate from me. We are the family of God. We're the household of faith. And so, we just wanna say thank you for being here tonight. Wanna honor all of the pastors of this house. We love you, appreciate you. Prophet Agnes, God bless you. Dr. Rick, Dr. Liz, we thank you for being here. Evangelists, we love you and appreciate you. And also wanna make mention tonight, we have Bishop Bumgarner in the house tonight. God bless you, my brother. Some folks from Truth Church, good to see you, my dear brother. And everyone who's here from Truth Church, just raise your hand and wave at us a little bit. We love you. God bless you. We're just all one big happy family. Can you say amen? So we just appreciate you being here. And so, as we get ready to give, you can go ahead if you wanna stand on your feet. There's multiple ways to give. Like I said, everything is gonna be going to these two men of God. If you wanna write a check, write it out to Kingdom Rain Ministries. We'll make sure they get one check, amen, before they go. And we're just thankful. It was brought to our attention that the prophet, Rian, I think I got that right. I'm doing my best. I believe we need to be honorable with names. This is his first time here and this is the first place he's ever ministered in the United States. And we just appreciate the word of the Lord thirty-something years ago that has set upon your life and has manifested this moment. So thank you, my brother, for being willing to obey that thing that God set over you that many years ago. And of course, Apostle Andrew, this is his sixty-fourth time to the state. And one of those times, it was kind of an extended stay. He lived here for a little while. But these are ambassadors. Man, when the prophet and the apostle are traveling together, oh, Lord! And something has been set in the atmosphere. And it began with our meeting last night. And I'm just delighted to be back here tonight. And I wanna say that I already feel that we've been elevated to a new place. Tonight, we're just gonna go a little higher, go a little deeper, be broadened, amen? Be deepened, amen? So stand on your feet. And what we're gonna do is have you give and just take a few minutes. We like to greet one another and just love on each other a little bit. We are the family of God. We appreciate you. We're gonna pray now. Father, as your beloved come and they give tonight, we thank you that it leaves their hand, it goes into yours, only to be recycled back into their life as a blessing that adds no sorrow with it. We thank you, Father, that your people, they prosper, not because of what they have, but because of whose they are and because of the dwelling of the Spirit on the inside of them. We thank you that we're the tabernacles of your Spirit. And Father, we thank you that the resources necessary to accomplish our purpose have been granted before the foundation of the earth. Now may you grant access to your people to take hold of those things that are necessary for them to accomplish the why of them being here. We thank you, Father, that you've gone before them. You've prepared a way before them. We thank you, Lord, that your people are enriched in every way. We thank you that they're the head and not the tail, they're above and not beneath. That they're blessed going in and blessed going out. These are the blessings that you've bestowed upon your people. And Father, we have those blessings in Christ. We thank you that every need is met according to your riches in glory, which is in Christ Jesus. Lord, we thank you that, Lord, our needs are not met in accordance with what is in the earth, but they are met according to the riches in your glory. And we thank you for that tonight. Everybody say amen and amen? Come and give tonight fellowship for about three minutes and then we'll be back. All right, everybody. All right, all right, all right, all right. Bless the Lord. All right. All right, everybody, find your seat if you don't mind. Prophet, come on, please. Come on, y'all welcome the prophet of the house. She's gonna take a minute or so to share something with you that has great significance to this meeting and then we're gonna have Apostle come.
My baby's sleeping. Hallelujah. I asked the Lord, it's two weeks ago, Saturday night, I'm like, okay, you're sending Apostle Andrew back. What is his assignment? I didn't get an answer right away. You wait till I went to sleep to wake me up. He said, "Do you know why you guys survived the storm through the pandemic? Because when Andrew Kennedy came, he married you to me." He said, "And you are in holy matrimony with me. That was the reason I saved you." He said, "You are my bride. You married me and you are mine." He said, "Now I'm sending him back for the wedding feast." So tonight is the wedding feast. It's the wine, the new wine. And I am so grateful for my apostle because as a prophet, you sometimes think you go crazy. So he showed me this wedding cake. And so, we purchased the wedding cake. And even the wedding cake was a miracle because at first, the amount of the cake was gonna be four hundred. And we thought, you know, we didn't wanna pay that. And Pastor Mary, with her wisdom, got it down to one fifty. And then, after one fifty, the cashier made a sixty-dollar mistake and we got it for one hundred and seventeen dollars. And so, the cake is out there and it's just to taste the goodness of God. And that we are his bride. The gates have been opened. The stage has been set. Jensen Beach for Jesus. The Treasure Coast is not just the name, but we are the treasures in Treasure Coast. And we're going after the treasures. I just want to bless you and to bless my apostle. Bless your wives and your children. I love you.
Thank you so much. Praise the Lord. You know, it's interesting because during the time that we had where we were going through the latter stages of actually our church homelessness, because we were actually looking for a place, I was invited to come and speak at Truth Church. And that was delayed because my wife and I, we got really sick. But the day that I walked into Truth Church, that Sunday morning, so many of the people from this house showed up and we had not seen you for twelve weeks. And I believe that the significance of them being here tonight reveals that our hearts are joined together. And I just wanna say thank you, my dear brother, because you created an opportunity for us to reconnect. And he kept telling me over and over and over, "Listen, you can use the building, you can use the building, you can use the building." I wanna say thank you. Say thank you for that. Several years ago, I got a message from a gentleman that I had heard many things about over the years but had never met, never had even dialogued with him. And he sent me a message and he wanted to connect and he said, "I wanna talk to you about the kingdom and I'm gonna be transparent and tell you." I thought, what in the world does this man wanna talk to me about? I need to be asking him questions. I don't know why he's reaching out to me. I was humbled that he even did. So we had our first conversation on a Zoom call. And God, out of that, birthed something that was special. And the last time he was here, we were on Dar, when he said something to Lady Jill and I, he said, "I have new friends." Well, at KRM, we don't have friends. We only have family. So we ignored what he said. We bypassed friendship, went right to family. And so, something happened, I believe, that day. Because as Prophet Agnes said, he preached a message called "Marry Me." And he talked about the marriage between the people of God and the Lord himself. And it really had an impact on us. And I can tell you that I am so grateful for all the men and women of God that he has brought into our life. Dr. Rick and Liz are special to us. Come on, they're special to this house. And all the pastors and all of you. But it's an interesting investment when God brings someone from such a far place. And we have sat in the company of apostolic and prophetic office and calling in the last two meals. And something wonderful has manifested out of those conversations. Like-mindedness, like-heartedness. The reality that no matter where you are in the world, there are other people, even though you may feel like you're alone, there are other people who have been with God and heard God say the same things that he said to you. That is a beautiful thing. And so, tonight, would you, watching on Facebook and Twitter and YouTube and the people in this house, would you welcome this man of God, Apostle Andrew Kennedy, all the way from South Africa as he comes tonight to minister the word? We love you, my brother. Take your freedom. Hallelujah. Please remain standing. How great is our God? Is our God. Sing with me how great is our God. All will see how great, how great. Is the name above all names. Is the name above all names. Worthy of all praise. How great is our God.
How great is our God? Praise our God. Sing with me how great is our God. All will see our grace. Father, I wanna thank you tonight for just your specialness. Thank you that you are the master architect that can put a thing together like no man has ever seen. If I'm just listening to what Apostle Chris is saying, and what Rian did last night, even the graces that are in this house, what you are doing, you are a genius. And we love you for that. We thank you that we are alive in a time like this, that we can experience your goodness in the land of the living. I thank you for this house. I thank you for Apostle Chris and Jill, for all the graces together that form a cluster. I thank you, Lord, that you are crafting, and have been crafting, a wineskin in this household of faith that is about to receive the new wine like never before. I pray tonight that the enlargement of territory will happen after these meetings, Lord. We agree, and we come, and we stand with our family, and we say that this territory is this church's portion. We speak life. We receive your grace. We receive your mercy. We receive your kindness, Lord. I pray for a spirit of understanding in this house. I pray that you will even come and be so good to us as to heal sick people right now. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. If you are sick in this place, just lift up your right hand right now. If you're not feeling well, lift up your right hand. You're watching us online, just, just lift up your hand right there. We'll see you in the spirit, in Jesus' name. In Jesus' name, in Jesus' name. I come against cancer. I come against sugar diabetes. I come against every pain, every ailment, in the name of Jesus. And each ailment goes right now. I call every sick body in line with the word of God. And I say unto you, "Be healed, be healed, be healed," in Jesus' mighty name. And everybody see it? Come on, let's give God some praise here tonight. Yeah, come on, let's give God some praise here tonight. It is a new day. It's a new season. The night is behind us. The night is behind us. And I believe that we are the 11th-hour workers that's gonna get done in one hour what the others could not get done in 11 hours. And we are about to finish strong. Touch your neighbor and say, "Finish strong." Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. We're gonna finish strong. Get done in one hour. No effort. No effort. In his rest, just finish strong. It, it is finished. And move in that grace. Amen? Man, there's so many things in the atmosphere tonight. Me and Rian wish, wish we had more time with you. But thank you, Apostle Chris and Jill, for your kindness, all the graces in this house. Special people you are. Look at this, on a Friday night, y'all, y'all got 200 restaurants to go to, but you are here. Bless you, bless you. Our new friend that we met tonight, we saw Jason Baumgardner, thank you. You know, it's amazing how God can connect like-minded people, and you just immediately know, I like him. Dr. Rick and your wife, bless you guys. Always great to see you, and everybody else, bless you, bless you, bless you, bless you. Come on, put your hands together for your man and woman of God in this house. Love on them. You can take your seats at this time. I, I am, I'm extremely blessed to have my brother in arms, Rian DeToye, with me. And, you know, I have really dreamed about this day. As, as Apostle Chris said, this is my 65th trip to the United States. And in the last couple of times that I've come to your nation, I've really had a couple of conversations with the Lord, saying that, you know, it's, it's wonderful to, to see Him move, and, and, and use me, and so forth, and that's great. But, but there was a healthy frustration that started happening with me, thinking, thinking about moving forward as far as our efficiency and being effective. And how God put this trip together was just amazing, and, I'm just so glad not to be doing this alone anymore. And how great was that word last night, that we heard, that the wine is in the cluster? And there's a womb in this place which is obviously pregnant. And I'm, I'm just hearing tonight for you guys, God is about to enlarge your territory. God is about to enlarge your territory. And even that which you fear, which is not your capability, God says you will have the grace to do that when it comes. Amen? Okay, I'm done. Hallelujah. Are you ready for the word? Man, it feels so good in this place tonight. Anything can happen. Anything can happen. Matthew 21:1. Matthew 21, verse 1. "And when they drew nigh unto Jerusalem, and were come to Bethpage, unto the mountain of olives, then Jesus sent two disciples." He sent two disciples. I'm gonna preach something to you tonight that I want a title. "Are We There Yet?" Have you ever been on a road trip? With some kids in your car? And you left your home, and five minutes after you left, there is this irritating voice from behind? And that's only half of my title. "Are We There Yet?", question mark, hashtag. No, we are not. Bethpage is an interesting Greek word. It's, it's put together by two words. Beth, of course, if you think of Bethlehem, and Bethel, Beth means house. Page means, in the Greek, half-ripe figs. It's the house of half, I'm in America, it's not half. Half- ripe- figs. 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 Something you can eat. Half-ripe figs. Fags. You have it now? Half-ripe figs. How many of you got that last night from Prophet Rian, when he said, "You are still in nappies"? Did you hear that? It's diapers. Oh. Man, you can get in trouble with certain words. I gotta stay focused now. Alright. "And when they drew nigh unto Jerusalem, and were come to Bethpage, house of half-ripe figs, unto the mountain of olives, then sent Jesus two disciples." I really believe that our hearts cry at this time, after all that we've been through, is that God would touch our cities like never before. We, as mankind, have not faced something that we've just faced for over 100 years. And I'm sure you have so many stories to tell me about the trouble that you've been through. Me and Rian can also then contribute to you guys about the trouble that we've been through in South Africa. We've lost dear friends. We've lost great men and women of God. We've lost congregation members. Churches around us closed down. Some people that we love dearly are not in ministry anymore, and, 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 and. But I, I wanna say something to, I don't know, I wanna say something strong. We are still here. We are still here. And, and because we are still here, you know, this, this shouldn't be Christianese to your ears, was what I'm gonna say now. It's a new day. If God wanted to fix COVID, I'm very sure he could have just clicked his fingers and sorted out. It's obvious that where we stand right now, however you see this thing, my five sins is this. He stood back, and he watched us handle this whole thing. And the Holy Spirit spoke to me a couple of weeks ago, when I was preparing for Palm Sunday in my church, I heard the Holy Ghost say, "Everything is changing tomorrow." Everything. Everything worldwide in my church is changing tomorrow. Man, I was so excited to get to church, because I was expecting revival, I was expecting an explosion, I was expecting everything. And it was a great service. It really was a great service. And I heard the Holy Ghost say this afterwards, "It's like an earthquake. It has already happened." Just because you don't see the results of the earthquake, doesn't mean that the earthquake has not happened. Somebody say, "Amen." And I am telling you by the Spirit of the Lord, that God has not forgotten about America. God is not mad at America. In fact, you are about to see a move of God's Spirit like you have not seen before. What the prophets prophesied, what men and women of God have said over your nation, what was spoken even from this pulpit, you are about to see it manifest. The Kairos is about to penetrate the Cronos. Heaven on earth! Hallelujah. But we're not there yet. Somebody say, "Half." Right figs. If you think about figs in the Bible, it's interesting. Because Adam and Eve used fig leaves to, to cover their nakedness. And, and I think what I'm gonna do with tonight's message is, is just give you a prophetic look of what I'm seeing, where the church is, and what God is busy doing, and then get excited about what is about to happen. Because what about, what is about to happen is God is about to take charge of cities in the world, and he's gonna shake cities like we've never seen before. Whole territories. You think you've seen revivals. You think you've seen. And, and, and we've got an idea of how that needs to look like. Get rid of that idea, because this is a new day. This is a new season. And everything has changed. Get ready for a new apostolic anointing. Get ready for a new prophetic anointing. Get ready for a new teaching anointing, an evangelistic anointing, a new pastoral anointing. Everything has changed. It's the most exciting time to be alive in God's kingdom, to see what he is about to do. Half-ripe figs. So Adam and Eve needs a revelation. Who told you you naked? I didn't tell you you naked. I never, ever created you to be unclothed. So the glory is coming. I said, "The glory is coming." And then if we go on and think about examples in the Bible, you know, how sad is that, that God curses that fig tree? I mean, it wasn't the tree's fault. So the idea of figs, it's interesting in the context of the story that I'm gonna read you to, the, the, tonight, that, that before he goes to Jerusalem, there's a stop at this place called Half-Ripe Figs. And, and I don't wanna mess with, with too much tonight, I'll see how far I can go. But if I think about God's body, God's church in the word of God, and, and connect that with a tree, or a plant, or a fruit, I, I know, I know, I know. I know, I know, you know? People look at the fig tree, and they have a preconceived idea of what that needs to be in the church. I got three uh-huh's. So, so just hear me out. If, if I can have an opinion on that, I would, I would more look at, at, at the vine, thinking that that's the church. If he's the vine, and we are the branches, then the fruit of that grapes sounds more like church than a fig tree. I don't know how many of you are hearing me. Because the place of figs, half-ripe figs, is not the final destination. Are we there yet? No, we're not. But before we get there, there's obviously stuff that's taking place, if we like it or not, that God is doing. I wish somebody can say, "Preach." Colossians 6, verse 15, just to make a point, and then I wanna go on. "For in Christ Jesus, there is neither circumcision, neither circumcision availeth anything, nor uncircumcision, but a new creature. And as many as walk according to his ru, to this rule, peace be on them, and mercy upon the..." So there's an Israel of God. Somebody say, "Half-ripe" figs. It's not that what we've heard is necessarily wrong. But can we, as the body of Christ, get to a place that we look at each other and say, "It's not correct"? Are we there yet? No! So it's not incorrect necessarily, as what it is incomplete. Can I walk this out tonight? It's not that, that, that we've missed it. It's, 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 it's like a room that, that's got black paint on it everywhere. And you stand on that side of the building, and right over there, there is a, a candle that's lit. And let's say that corner has, has got a, a green or a yellow wall painted in that corner. From that side of the building, we can look at what we're seeing afar off, and we can say that that is a green wall, or a yellow wall, because of the reflection of the light that we are seeing. But the closer that we're getting to the light, somewhere, we are gonna determine, we are halfway there. And what we saw there, back when we started, it's not a yellow wall. We are seeing more. And it's not the fact that the previous generation was wrong. It's just incomplete. Are you with me? It's not necessarily wrong, it's incomplete. I look at my father's generation, and, and, and there's a, this, this, we can never, ever forget to honor the previous generation. I so love when I'm with him, he, he does that every service. I've watched him online. He welcomes you every single time when you're in the service. And Prophet Agnes. And, and it's, it's, it's- And it's so healthy. It must so be there. And I encourage you to do that. But for the ones that's not here anymore, especially my own father, I had conversations with him. And at the end of his life, he said to me, "How many things changed through the years as he even saw more light?" Are you with me? And he would be very direct. I mean, those old timers were, "It's right" "or it's wrong." Well, you tell me. It's my way? And that's not always true. Because sometimes in his word, it's not either/or, it's both and. Andrew, what are you talking about? Brother, we need to be aggressive because the Bible says the kingdom of heaven suffers violence, but we ain't taking it by force. Gotcha. Absolutely. Let's go for it. Hallelujah! But the kingdom of God is righteousness. Peace! Peace! And fighting! But it's not either/or, it's both and. Are we there yet? Are we there yet? No, we're not there yet. Can you please just enjoy the ride? Have you told your kids that before? My goodness gracious me, we are in the United States of America. Look outside of the window and look at the mountain. Are we there yet? No, we're not. So it's a joy unspeakable and full of glory and the... Has never yet been told. I wish somebody can get excited with me. Because there is a half that we as the body of Christ are about to walk into and I'm here to prophesy, I'm here to declare, I'm here to decree over us tonight that the half has never yet been told. Hallelujah! Joy! "And when they drew nigh unto Jerusalem, and were come to Bethpage," please keep your Bibles open in Matthew chapter 21, "unto the mountain of Olives, then sent Jesus to disciples." The "went"ing needs to change into "sending." There's too many people that can "make" and "went" instead of being "sent." And those ministries, well, I'm surprised that some of them survived the storm because most of those ministries did not survive the storm. That's a horrible word. And let me tell you why it's... That was too African, wasn't it? Let me tell you why I think it's horrible. Because we as the apostolic community in the world should not be caught out that we are too happy that we are right and they are wrong. Because where's the father heart in you to go pick up a wounded soldier? Are you with me? Can I go on? Verse number two, "Saying unto them, Go into the village over against you, and straightway you shall find a..." I struggle. It's a donkey. "Tied and occult with her." Isn't that interesting? A cult with her. A cult, not a mayor. He's specific in telling us it's a cult. "With her." "Loose them and bring them unto me." They are tied and I'm sending a company in this new day, in this new season, to loose that which is tied. Now, I don't know how you grew up, but we grew up chasing demons, morning, noon, and night. If there's something strange in the neighborhood, who are you going to call? The Kennedy Gang. We'll chase them. And we bind it. And we bind it. Satan, I bind... What you talking about Willis? You bind Satan? Woo! Pastor, we had spiritual warfare. Friday night, we kataharamasike, la hasta, rock it, ha ha! You wasted your time. How can you say that? Because you're fighting a battle that's already been won! It's your fault. You told me you're writing a book on this. But come on. And we need to listen to that, and it's not accurate. It is not accurate. We are supposed to have one fight left. As far as I read the New Testament, and that's the good fight of faith. Faith in what? That Satan is already defeated. And the platform of our warfare is the foundation, that that's where we're standing, our ground from not fighting. Isaiah 40 verse 1, "Say unto my people that the warfare has been accomplished." So binding and loosening needs to take on a new understanding in this day. And if I read that portion in the Bible, it's more, more, "What we bind ourselves to in the earth shall be bound for us in the heavens, and what we loose ourselves from in the earth will be loosed in the heavens." Now, just think about that for a second. Because I loose myself from the spirit of poverty. I loose myself from sickness. I loose myself from damage in my church. Come on, you gave us the authority in the heavens! Loose it! And bind it! "I bind myself to the promises in the world, that the thousands will fall to my one side and ten thousand on the other side, but it shall not come nigh unto my house." Come on, shout in this place! Say yes! Say yes! Say yes! I feel the Holy Ghost! Hallelujah! Bind the devil! Are we there yet? Are we there yet? "And if any man say out unto you, you shall say the Lord has need of them." Them! Them! The wine is in the cluster. The one-man show is over. I'll come, but a limousine needs to pick me up. Who you? Who you? I'll come, but my water needs to be 20 degrees. And I want rotisserie chicken. I contract that. Who you? Well, I am. Okay, I get it. There are people amongst us who's great. But our example was made of no reputation. Paul was referred to, "Well done, good and faithful." Come on, guys. Are we there yet? We are definitely not there. "Get them loose, and straightway he will send them." And all this was done that it might be fulfilled, which was spoken by the prophet saying, "Tell ye the daughter of Zion." Isn't that interesting? Can be the daughter of anything, but I'm going to leave that for, well, any one of you guys here in the front to sort that out on Sunday morning. "Behold, your king comes unto thee, meek." Eight bodyguards. Who wants to kill you? Look, man, I get, if it's somebody like, without dropping names, but I mean, people with big ministries and I get it. They probably need a bodyguard. But you've got four people in your church. And eight bodyguards. Apostle, apostle what? Twenty years old bishop. You don't know what, you bought your thing in a shop! And your cross is plastic. We see right through you. Come on, can I just say it in America? I don't know about you, but I'm sick and tired of that. Are we there yet? No. Man, my God is about to pull this thing together. It's a new day. It's a new season. "Tell the daughter of Zion, Behold, your king is coming unto thee, meek, and sitting upon an ass, and a cult, watch now, the full of." The full of. Now, I don't know how much apostle you have taught in this church. I'm pretty sure it's impossible for you not to have touched sonship in its essence, that the whole of creation is not waiting in anticipation for members. The whole of creation is not waiting in anticipation for the revealing of partners. My goodness. The whole of creation is waiting in anticipation for the revealing of the... Now, that word "heos" in the Greek is the same word that the father used when he spoke up when John the Baptist baptized Jesus. And he said, "That is my heos." That's my thirty-year-old, mature son that's coming out of the water. It's my son. It's my son. Who do men say I am? Peter spoke up and said, "I'm not going to call you a prophet like all the others do." Because some say you are John the Baptist, who was a prophet. Some say Elijah, some say Jeremiah, some say one of the prophets. So they all four call you a prophet. I refuse to call you a prophet any longer. I'm going to call you, you are the son. You are the heos. Can you believe the cult standing next to this donkey is referred to as a fool in the English language, but the word there is "son"? Andrew, what does that mean? Well, there's three words for "son" in the Greek language that I know of. Dr. Rick, you guys need to help me. But the first one is "technon." Technon in John 1 verse 13 says, "Unto them he gave the authority to be called sons of God." The word "technon" means baby in Christ. The other word is "nappios." You still didn't get that joke that I told about Rian last night? He used the word "nappies." Let Prophet Agnes explain that to you. It's diapers. In South Africa, babies wear nappies. Nappios. That's where we get it from. Diaper. There's no Greek word for diaper. I'll drive on the wrong side of the road and wrong side of the car. And then there's the Greek word "heos", which means mature son. Now, watch this picture. Because this is such a prophetic picture of what God is doing right now. I'm about to touch Jerusalem. What I'm about to do in Jerusalem is going to change everything. I'm about to get crucified, and when I get crucified, Satan is defeated, the kingdom has come, healing is your portion, all of the Abbas will be established in Jerusalem. But the way that I'm going to drive into Jerusalem is on a new wineskin. The way that I go to the city is on a father-son relationship. The church has got to move from membership to sonship. We can bring them in as members. We can catch them out there as babies. But if we don't take them towards sonship, the Bible calls you illegitimate. "Unless the Lord builds the house, they that labor labor in vain." That word means evil. The word "built" means to family through sons. Unless the Lord, "family through sons." In other words, if your ministry, whatever you do for God, if it doesn't produce sons, what are you doing? If your ministry doesn't involve becoming family, then you're not hearing what God is saying and what God is doing right now. Hallelujah! Are you with me? Look at this quickly. Hebrews chapter 1 verse 1. And you know, the King James Version is so precious to us to give us certain words that are in italics, which means, when they translated the Bible, they couldn't find an English word to fit what the Greek actually says there, and sometimes they actually use no Greek. But it doesn't read well in the English. This is one of those cases. So let me read to you. Hebrews chapter 1, verse 1. "God, who in sundry times and in divers manners spoke in times past..." Look how amazing this is. "To fathers." To fathers. "...by the prophets hath in these last days spoken unto us." Let me see if the King James Version says... No. So that word "heos" is in italics. Can some of you see that in your Bible? It's because the word's not there. What actually is written there is, "Hath in these last days spoken to us a son." Sonship is a language. Sonship is a language. Woo! Hallelujah! "I only do what I see, my Father." Hallelujah! "I only do what I hear, my Father." He came to display the wineskin. He came to show us the wineskin. That's the way that he wants to build his church. No wonder he stood back and said, "I'm not happy." And somebody needs to say it. We're not there yet. Bethpage. But we are about to move into the city. I feel Jesus. "And the disciples went, and did as Jesus commanded them, and brought the donkey and the cult, and put on them their clothes, and they set him thereon." There's too many people waiting on Jesus while he's waiting on us. I need to say that again. There's too many people. I know, I know. This is something precious to many people in America. Just hear me out and go think about it. My great-grandfather told us that the return of the Lord is imminent around the corner. That was about eighty years ago. See, it's not that they were necessarily wrong. It's just incomplete. So Andrew, what are you saying? Acts chapter 3, verse 19. "Repent you therefore, so that the times of refreshing from the face of the Lord may come on you." Then verse number 20 says the following. Acts chapter 3, verse 20. Then verse number 20 says the following, Acts chapter 3, verse 20. "And he shall send Jesus Christ." Isn't that what America's waiting for? Speak to me in this place. Christian television. I mean, that's the deal. That's how you seal the deal. So watch this now. Can I speak to you? We got the, we've got to win the loss at any cost. Okay, well, that's playing on people's emotions, and it makes money flow. But Andrew, aren't we supposed to win the loss? Absolutely. That's step number one. Are we there yet? That's step number one. Have they heard the gospel of the kingdom? Have they heard the gospel of grace? Have they heard the gospel of peace? Have they heard the gospel of Christ? Have they heard the gospel of God? Did you know that there are nine more than just the gospel of salvation? Are we there yet? So really, if you think about it, Christian television, and I've got great friends in Christian television, if you're watching, please invite me. I'm gonna set this right. I, I'm serious. We gotta set this thing right. Because you're not telling the whole truth. And the truth shall set you free. Watch me, watch me. "And he shall send Jesus Christ, which before was preached unto you." Watch now, watch now. "Whom heaven must receive." Are you watching me? "Whom heaven must receive until..." The time. Are we there yet? Until the time of complete restitution. Other translations will use the word reformation. I wonder if we shouldn't go for a reformation instead of a revival? Because a revival digs back into what was, while a reformation reforms that which is inaccurate. Come on, America, are you hearing me here tonight? Are you hearing me here tonight? Hallelujah. So get your head in the game. Get your head in the game. Stop waiting on him to come. Make him come. Can we do that, Andrew? Absolutely. That's what First Thessalonians 5 is saying. "Behold, he shall come like a thief in the night." Says who? Number one, since when is Jesus a thief? Oh wow, we've never heard it that way. Just think about it. Is Jesus a thief? Or is he a savior? Verse number two, "For those that don't know him, he shall come like a thief in the night; but for you that know him, we shall obviously anticipate the coming of the Lord." What will be the signs of the times? Woo, Ukraine, Russia, 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 haha. It's like a man told me in Louisiana one year, "I've got it, brother. You see, this is the blessing of this certain race, because Abraham, Abraham's name was strange to Abraham. Your revelation only works in English." Russia, see Brother Kennedy, that's Russia. That's not what it means. We cannot be that immature. Andrew, what are you busy with tonight? A call for maturity in the body of Christ. Are we there yet? We are not there yet. "And a very great multitude spread their garments in the way, and others cut down branches from the trees and strawed them in the way; and the multitudes that went before and that followed cried, saying, Hosanna." When I heard this the first time, it shocked me to my core. Because the way that I grew up in church is hosanna is a celebratory word. You know, wave a flag, hosanna, hosanna. If you will go and look at the meaning of the word hosanna, it means help us. Help us. Now get the picture. Play for me, please. It's getting too quiet. And it's about to get even more quieter. Because I gotta go to the temple now. Where he cleans out the temple. Here comes Jesus. They placed him on a new wineskin. Saying, "What we've done up until now doesn't work. Obviously, it obviously didn't work for the last four thousand years." Something about you that is so fresh, so awesome, so unique. Hosanna. Help us. This is the way I'm gonna help you. Go loose that which was tied, a new thing. Bring that donkey and its mature son, that I can show you what I'm busy with. Then you put me, you get your head in the game, you occupy until I come. You put me on those two donkeys, and I will ride past religion. That's busy with this stuff in my house of prayer. And I will ride into Jerusalem, and I will look at you, and I will show you. If you want my help, let me show you how I'm gonna help you. Goodness gracious me. I really am asking the Lord for wisdom right now. America's been one of the most generous places in the world. Let me speak to you straight. I get so mad if prophets prophesy doom and gloom over America. You prophesy against a principle in the word of God that's against what you're saying. Because whatever a man sews. So me and Rian is the product of what happened in America. In the Zusa outpouring of God's Holy Spirit in California in 1906, John G. Lake and Thomas Heschmelach got touched in those meetings, got on a boat, went to South Africa, and started the Apostolic Faith Mission in the nation of South Africa, which is today the biggest Pentecostal organization with thousands of churches. Rian got saved there, I got saved there. We found our way in the Lord of that which was sewed into America. I went to Mexico years ago, and I found out that Pentecost was received in the country, Mexico, what they told me, in the late 1950s. Now, just the other day, guess who shared the gospel with him? People from America. There is no doom and gloom on its way to your nation. Pastor, but you don't know who's our president. See, that's your problem. Man, I've never been this bold. How can God only move if so-and-so was president? He's God. He can do whenever, whatever he wants. Are we there yet? Obviously not. Put on the board for me, Matthew 21 verse 10, please. "And when he was coming to Jerusalem, all the city was moved, saying, 'Who is this?'" What, what, what's, okay, go on. "And the multitude said, 'This is Jesus.'" Where's the portion where he goes into the temple and he cleans the temple? Is that verse number nine? Twelve. Twelve. "And Jesus went into the temple of God, and he cast out all them that sold." Isn't that interesting? First sold, and then bought. Now, I love you. I love, I love you with all my heart. I've been, I've been coming to this nation since 1996, but there is no nation in the world that can make money out of a product like America. You can package it and sell it in a second. Bishop Michael Pitts is a very good friend of mine, and we, we've got this joke going about Africa. If you wanna come with me to South Africa, let me, let me just give you a quick glimpse of South Africa. We got this joke amongst us called Six Pieces of Chicken. So Bishop Pitts came to South Africa first time, and he loves to walk, so we walked on, on the beach, and it's like 11:30, and he wants chicken. So I said, "Bishop, you know, it's Africa, it's, stores close over here, and I don't know what we're gonna get open." And man, I tell you what, he saw a store open. So we walk over to the store, and, and they're closing down, and, and they're actually a burger joint, but, but there's chicken that they also sell, and there was a couple of pieces lying over there, and Bishop said, "Hmm, I want six pieces of chicken." Say with me, Africa. Africa is first and foremost a spiritual culture versus America that is a business culture. So this lady said, "We don't have six pieces of chicken." Bishop looked past her, he said, "There's twenty pieces, give me." She goes, "No, no, 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 we have two pieces of chicken, or we have three-piece dinners. What would you like?" Bishop said, "You can surprise me. You can give me two, three pieces, or you can give me three." I want six pieces of chicken. It's been an ongoing joke with us for years. Because America can package it. Until I went to Lima, Ohio, and we went to Chicago's pizza over there, and there was a young man working, there's like a hundred tables, and we were the only people there, and we ordered a pizza. A half an hour later, he took the microphone, we're the only people in the place. Table number twenty-seven, your order is ready. Six pieces of chicken in America. We sat down to eat that pizza. We said, "Can we have some knives and forks?" My man said, "It's over there." Six pieces of chicken. America can package anything and sell it. Are we there yet? Aren't you tired of sand from the Holy Land for twenty-five dollars? Water from the Jordan River for twenty-five dollars? If you sow fifty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents tonight. Isaiah fifty-one, twenty-eight. It's interesting, they don't use books in the Bible, they've got like three chapters, or two chapters, or one chapter. It's always fifty and up. God will change your life if you sow a thousand dollars. I will prophesy over you for a thousand dollars. How long did you think they was gonna survive? Where are they now? Cleaning that out. You wanna see me touch the city? I'm gonna deal with it. Number two, you overthrew the table. Whose table are you sitting at? There's a movement in the earth that has converted precious people, and the selling point is, if you worship God in this church, you will never struggle financially. So what are they serving God for? Money. Me and Apostle Chris were talking today, I said, you know, it works both ways, because some of these prophets in Africa are busy with witchcraft. And I, I told, I told Prophet, I said, "I want them to come to America and try that over here." "Oh, I, I wanna sit in the front, I just wanna see that. Do all your crazy African stuff over here." You will go. But it's also, go try and preach that message in Haiti. In Uganda. Let's, let's see if you can pick up a thousand dollars from everybody in this three-minute window that God has just opened up for prosperity. Whose table are you sitting at? And then lastly, he also went ahead and he addressed the seats of them. That we get so comfortable in our gifts, that we sold that, and there's no character. Your gift can only take you so far. And obviously, God is throwing character out there and say, if you, we have a saying amongst us, "Please don't impress us with your gift." We're not impressed. Brother, I can prophesy, brother, I've got, I've got faith, brother, I've got gift of healing. Show me your life. Let's do this thing together. Go away with me for seven days. Let's live together. Let me see who you are. I am apostle so-and-so, I'm prophet. You know what, I will prophet you, I will apostle you. But the test is in the fruit. And when God cleaned that out, he went to the city, and he shook the city. This is a strong word. This is a difficult word. But it's a new day. Prophet Rian preached something in my church. Just turn the drums a little bit down, and let's go ahead and prepare that song, um, "How Great Is Our God" again, but let's do it a little bit higher, can we do that? He preached something in our church two Sundays ago, which was, it was so profound, dealing with the fact that, that God is serious about changing everything up. God is so serious about the timing of where we are at right now. It's almost like he spoke to Moses, we are living in that day right now, he spoke to Moses, "I wanna switch everything up. The way that you've done church up until now changes today. Instead of hitting the rock, I want you to speak to the rock." And he was so gracious, even though Moses did not listen, God still allowed him to lead his people, but he never saw the promised land. Moses got fired that day. Even though ministry kept on going on for him. Listen to the cries of the people. Hosanna, hosanna to the son of David. And he never corrects them. He allows them to say, "Help us, help us, son of..." Because he's serious about the fact that in this new day, in this new season, he's not restoring the temple or the tabernacle of Moses, he's not restoring the tabernacle of Solomon, he's serious about bringing his presence back into his church. Very serious. Very serious. Very serious about bringing his presence back. Clubs and all those things that we call churches is about to, God is about to deal with it. I wish I, I knew this before Rian knew it, but listen to this, listen to this, I'm finishing up with this. Mark chapter 14 verse 25 and Matthew 26, 29. So profound. Mark 14, 25 first. "Verily I say unto you, I will not drink of the fruit of the vine until the day that I drink it new." It's a new season. It's a new day. It's a fresh anointing. coming our way. Season of power and reformation. It's a new season. It's coming to us. It's a new season. It's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. It's a season of power and prosperity. It's a new season. It's coming our way. "You will not see me do this again until it's new in the kingdom." I've never seen it that way. God showed it to Rian two weeks ago. In other words, he never partook of the communion that day. Isn't that incredible? He served them with bread and wine. He said, "You will not see me do this again until the kingdom of God has come." And then he doesn't partake of it. Making sure it stops there. Then he dies, comes back and he walks with these two gentlemen from Emmaus. I studied it. It's a 23-mile walk from Jerusalem to Emmaus. Do you know how long they must have talked? And they did not recognize him, Miss Agnes, until he asked for something to eat. And the Bible says, "He opened the eyes and they knew who he was." Boom, it's a new season. Everything changes after the cross. Same with the disciples. How will we know the way? He goes, "Do you have something to drink for me?" And the eyes were opened and they understood all the scriptures. It's a new day. It's a new day. It's a new day. Imagine how much you have seen in the church. Everything, everything that... And God has you to participate in this new day. I pray strength. I pray power to your body. I pray that God will add unto you years and years and years and years that you will have the privilege to see this new and taste it and say, "Ooh, how sweet it is." I bless you with long life tonight. Thank you, Jesus. It's a new day. It's a new season. There's too much for you to do. I cannot rub you in your body. I speak life. I speak life. I say unto death, "You keep your hands from this man of God. You shall live and you shall not die in the name of Jesus and proclaim the good works of the Lord in the land of the living." Be healed, be healed, be healed, be healed! In the name of Jesus. Long life, long life. I agree with you for long life. Long life, long life. In the name of Jesus. It's a new day. It's a new season. Fresh anointing. Hallelujah. Thank you, Father. I really believe that what is being deposited is gonna shape your future. But you cannot put new wine in an old wineskin. Something's gotta change. If I may, if you are in full-time ministry, would you just stand quickly? Just, just, just stand. Can I just take a minute, Pastor Andrew? Hallelujah. I just want you to come and stand with me in the front. Just come, just come, just come. See, unless the pioneers change, I said, "Unless the pioneers change, leaders won't change." Unless leaders change, followers can't change. Unless fathers change, sons can't change. It starts here. It starts here. God makes a statement and he says the following to Pharaoh. "Let my son go." Israel, thou art my firstborn, he says, "Let my son go. Let my son go." And we preached on that. I'm all for that. "Let my son go, let my son go, let my son go." But in saying that, they got stuck in the house of Egypt 420 years, doing the same thing over and over and over and over and over again. And we as the church have done that for 420 years too long. And then in one night, he said, "This is the last time. Eat all of it. Leave nothing over. I want to change your appetite tonight. I'm gonna change your appetite tonight." Everything he said, "Eat all of it. Leave nothing over." That which was remained was burned and roasted in fire. Nothing remained. What was that which they ate? It says, "A lamb." Listen to me very carefully. God did not say, "Let my lamb go." He said, "Let my sons don't..." Lams don't depart Egypt. Sons do. And in one night, they transitioned from complete lamb into complete son. So as a lamb is silent before its shearers, lambs don't speak. Sons decree. Sons announce. Sons create. There is a new atmosphere, there is a new season. Devour the lamb, eat all of it, leave nothing over. That meal must finish in the land of slavery, in the land of bondage, in the land of frustration, in the land of lack, in the land of not enough. That meal must be finished now. Finish it now. Whatever you were busy with of yesterday, finish it now. Because tomorrow morning, you wake up, you're a son. I'm changing it and the moment the nature changes to the son, they walk out. Hear me, hear my heart. Lambs don't get an inheritance. Sons do. Lambs don't receive ground. Sons do. Lambs don't cross seas. Sons do. God cannot migrate us to another level until all of the old is ingested, devoured and given up in fire. So tonight, everything changes. It's the last time we will discuss this. It's the last meal. We're walking out as a corporate man, as a corporate son in the earth. God is changing the nature, the very DNA of church. God's changing us. Would you just take hands right through, please, right through? Would you all stand with us, please? Just extend your hands. Just stretch it out. Father, give us wisdom. Give us wisdom how to transition in one night. There is no time for 40 years. There's no time for 40 days. There's no time, there's no time. In one night, God shall transition from meek and mild and silent to decreeing inheriting sons in one night, in Jesus' name. The lambs shall be ingested. We receive all of you. We receive all of you. We receive all of you that we may be complete and complete what is incomplete. We receive everything that you have for us, past, present and future. And we say, "Thank you, Father." As a leadership, as heads of households, God as pastors of churches, right here tonight in Jesus' name, everything changes. Everything changes. The very nature of your city changes. The very nature of your household changes. The very nature of your congregation changes in Jesus' name. We transition from meek and mild and silent into inheritance of sons in Jesus' name. The cry went out, "Let my son go." So we set the sons free in our church. I said, "We set the sons free in our church." "We set the sons free in our households." "We set the sons free. We set the sons free. We set the sons free" in Jesus' name. I thank you, Father. I thank you, Father. I thank you, Father. Lord, even a new dimension in preparation for that which lies ahead, in preparation for a new season, in preparation for a new day. There is a new sun arising and a new sun that shall dawn. God is picking up something from you. God is picking up something, even you, going to another level. Even you going to a new decree in God. A new voice that shall be uttered. A new, man, it shall be a creative power out of you in Jesus' name. It shall come forth. It's in your voice. It's in your voice. It's in your voice. Create, 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 create. It's a living word. Life-giving word, life-giving word. Let it come forth in Jesus' name. Lord, let the words be weighty. Let the words be weighty. Let the words be weighty. A transformation in Jesus' name. There's a new voice in the voice in Jesus' name, a new voice. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Can we ask you just to lay our hands on you? Can we do that? Okay. Hallelujah. Come, my sister, lead us. I wanna, I want us to lay our hands on everybody. Can we do that? It's not about falling, it's just about receiving. Rian just wanna come and say what God has given us. We stand with you. We come to lift up your hands. We come to bless you. We come to bless you. Can we do that? Hallelujah. Sing for me, my sister. How great, how great is our God. He's the name above. He's the You are worthy And my heart How great You are, you are the name above. You're the You are worthy And my heart How great is our God. How great, how great, how How great Is our God. Sing with me. How great Is our God. Jesus, you're great and mighty. You're so great and mighty. Great and mighty, great and mighty, Lord. How great, how great Is your name, Jesus. You're exalted above the heavens, above the earth. Nobody like you, Lord. Nobody like you. Nobody like you, oh. You have a name, exalted. You are the Exalted King. And my heart, and my heart And the name above all names. You are worthy And my heart, and my heart How great How great is our God. Shout it out, how great, how great Sing with me. You're so great, Jesus. Great and mighty. Oh, we see. How great, how great Great Father, great King. Being exalted, how great, how How great Sing with me. How great And all, and all we see. How great How great is our God. Hallelujah. Wow, 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 wow. All night tonight, as I said there, I heard these words resonating on the inside of me. I want you to say this with me. What used to work against me
What used to work against
Is about to work for me. The word tonight is, "Are we there yet?" No, we're not there yet, but we're on our way. No, we're not there yet, but we're on our way. So when I said what I said to you, "What used to work against you is about to work for you," is basically... It's explained in two words. Tipping point. If I go over to lift that piano, all of the weight is working against me. But when I get to the tipping point, what was working against me... When I get to the tipping point, all that was pushing against me is now going to work for me. And I heard the Lord say that the body of Christ is about to move into a tipping point acceleration. It takes much longer to push it up. But once you get to the tipping point, there's an acceleration that that which was going against you begins to move quickly for you. And what you could not move is now going in the other direction with acceleration. And I believe that this word that we heard tonight, I think it is profound in that it goes beyond what we can comprehend. It goes beyond goosebumps. It goes to the core of what God is saying. What was said last night, in summation, is that the wine is in the cluster. He's speaking to a corporate people. And the word to this corporate people, the body of Christ, is that, "Have we accomplished it yet?" No. But the good news is... Oh, come on, somebody. The good news is, is that there is still potential and capacity to get to the place of destiny in order that that which was working against us will now begin to work for us. Glory to God. I want to say to you... Matter of fact, I heard Bishop Pitt say this years ago. When I came here to the Treasure Coast in 2013, I was in prayer one day, and I do not believe that we are fighting the devil. I know for some of y'all, it's going to take you a minute. God has no contenders. There is no one who can contend with Him. There is none beside Him. There's no equals. He has no rivals. We sing about it. The idea that God is fighting the devil and the devil is fighting God... Think about it. But He did speak to me when I got here, and He said something to me. And I've shared this with Karen before. He said to me, "What has dominated this region is Nimrod." Okay, God, I need you to talk to me about Nimrod. Nimrod has a twofold meaning. It's like a coin. One side is, I get up. The other side is, you get down. This has manifested before my very eyes over and over and over in this area, that this thing wants to push some down so it can elevate itself. Nimrod was a hunter, which means that everyone that had a target on them from Nimrod was a prey. I get up, you get down. The reality of it is, is that as we have continued to do the things that God has told us to do in this region, we've seen this begin to shift. We've seen it begin to shift. And tonight, I heard the Lord say, "I have brought you to a tipping point. You're not there yet, but getting there will not be as fast as it's... It will be faster than the time it's taken you to get here." He said it at the outset tonight. The 11th-hour worker. See, it took 11 hours to get that thing to the tipping point. And somebody came along in the 11th hour and simply did this. Boop. And I believe we're a part of the company that said, "Boop." Come on, just say, "Boop." I want you to... All this next week, I just want you to think about it and go, "Boop." Because we have actually come to the point in which that which was working against us is now going to work for us with acceleration. Well, just stretch your hands toward these two men of God. Father, as they leave this region and go into another, give them keen discernment. We thank you, God, that you have equipped them for this mandate and mission. We thank you that as ambassadors, they are delegates in the kingdom. We thank you that a sure word lives in them, a word that is in season, that brings about all that is necessary to those people that they will stand in front of. May every table they sit at, may the wisdom of the Spirit, may it prevail, and may your truth be so pronounced that those who sit at the table with them cannot resist it nor deny it. Make them, oh God, vessels that are easy to palate. Make them vessels that are easy to digest. Cause their words to be sharpened and cause their hearts to overflow with compassion that, Father, God causes those they speak to to receive the word with gladness. We thank you for provision. We thank you for protection. We thank you for their families back home. God, as they have remained in that territory, we thank you that, God, you watch over them. You keep them and you strengthen them. And Lord, as these men continue to move forward in the United States, we thank you that every place that their foot treads, you'll give it to them. Everything their hand touches, it will prosper. Thank you that you have sent these men of God to this nation, and may they bear a light, God, that cannot be... Come on, somebody. May they bring a light that cannot be put out and may they bring a water that God quenches every adversarial fire that the enemy would try to raise up. We thank you, God. No fiery dart will prevail over them or their families. And everybody shout it, amen. Hallelujah. You have absolutely blessed us. The two of you. Man, those that they're headed to now, look out, look out, look out. Thank you. Thank you for affirming and teaching and instructing and imparting. Would you all agree with me and say, "I receive everything that God has left in this house." And we just say, "Truth Church, take it home with you." Hallelujah. And for Truth Church, what a powerful word over the bishop of the house. I am so glad that we live in a time where we don't build based upon gifts that inspire, but character that transforms. And I don't know about you. I like inspiration, but it don't help me on Friday when I need a word from God. The last thing I want to say to you before you leave, something has come to my spirit. Preachers, we need to be careful not to call people sheep. I don't believe that the transformation in our life, the metamorphoo, is not from a caterpillar to a butterfly. I believe it's from a sheep to a son. And if there's anything that has been reiterated to this house and to this people and those watching, is that we have to raise sons. We have to raise some. Well, I don't know if I want to be one. Well, if you don't want to be a son, then we'll just keep ministering to you. You can be a recipient of ministry. But when you decide that it's time to take the heart of the Father and you want to enter into sonship, there's an inheritance that you will begin to access that will cause your life to go to a place that can never go without it. Can you say, "Amen"? We bless all of you in the name of the Lord. Thank you for being here, this praise team. Thank you. As always, you've done such an outstanding job. Once again, come on. Let's give Prophet and Apostle a hand for coming all the way from South Africa. They rearranged their ticket to be here first. Hallelujah. Man, we're blessed. And as you go, just love on somebody, and we appreciate you so much. God bless you. Have a wonderful evening. Yes. Oh, the cake. Taste and see that the Lord is good. I think it's chocolate and vanilla.